The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. For all those who have not voted using the e-device, I will do a voice vote. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderman Robinson, Alderman Robinson is present. Alderman Hall, not present. Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Beal, not present. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez is present. Alderwoman Coleman, not present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderwoman Tabarez, Alderman Tabarez is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderman Knutson, not present. Alderman Gardner, not present. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now that we know that all members that are present have been recorded, we do have a quorum. We also have a couple of members have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added to the quorum? It's Taylor and Knutson. It's been moved and seconded.
Also in the chambers now, we have Alderwoman Gutierrez, present.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion, did we do that already? We did not. All those in favor of the motion to allow for remote participation for Knutson and Taylor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark the alders participating remotely as present for the roll call. Thank you all very much. Let's stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered today by Reverend Carla Thompson Powell of Metropolitan Chicago ELCA.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Johnson. I appreciate the invitation to be here. I am Pastor Carla from the Metropolitan Chicago Synod. I work with Bishop Yahiel Curry, and we are part of the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. So the Lutheran Church body is the ELCA. As we find ourselves at the beginning of this year, I was thinking about the scripture from Psalm 90 that says, "Lord, you have been our refuge from one generation to another. Before the mountains were brought forth, or the land, or the earth were born, from age to age, you are God. The span of our life is seventy years, maybe in strength even eighty, yet the sum of them is but labor and sorrow, for they pass away quickly and we're gone. So teach us to number our days, that we may apply our hearts to wisdom." I'm going to read that verse one more time. "So teach us to number our days, that we may apply our hearts to wisdom." I was thinking about all the ways in which we could count our lives. The musical Rent has a song, "Five Hundred Twenty-Five Thousand Six Hundred Minutes," that reminds us how many minutes we have in a year, how many days, how many hours, all of those reminders of all the ways in which we could count our days. But at this beginning of the year, it's important for us also to be able to listen and to think about paying attention to that time, paying attention to what we do with that time, paying attention to being aware of the gift of time, the gift of every moment, every hour, every day, every month, every year, and all of the ways that that gets played out in our lives. Teach us to number our days, which I might interpret as a prayer of saying, "Teach us to make those days count." Not just in ways that we run through life trying to get everything we possibly can, because there's also ways that rest and reflection can be part of those days. But I invite you to pray with me at this time, to turn our hearts to God. Almighty God, bless the public servants in this Chicago City Council meeting, that they may do their work in the spirit of wisdom, charity, love, mercy, peace, and justice. Teach us to number our days, so we may seek your wisdom, O God, to serve faithfully and practice our common life together, in all the ways we make decisions today about time, about who we include, about who we listen to, about what voices we center. Thank you, O God, for being in every moment and every day. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. This is a portion of the meeting for public comments. Mr. Clerk. The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Daniel Goodwin.
I am Dan Goldwin of the Jewish United Fund. On October 13, this council made the moral decision to stand with Hamas' victims and against Hamas. Unless it is significantly modified, supporting the current resolution means we'll be calling for an unconditional ceasefire that does not demand Hamas abandon violence and its quest to destroy Israel. At 6:28 a.m. on October 7, Hamas violated a nearly two-and-a-half-year-old ceasefire with Israel when Hamas terrorists invaded Israel, unleashed and orchestrated a deliberate orgy of murder, rape, torture, and kidnapping. Over twelve hundred were murdered, over four thousand were injured, and over two hundred and forty were kidnapped in mere hours. These facts are not in dispute. If you would like to see for yourself a small sample of what happened on October 7, visit the website, saturday-October-7, S-E-V-E-N, dot com. The videos and pictures at this site put in stark relief Hamas' disdain for human life and even the lives of family pets. Why should we trust Hamas to treat a new ceasefire as anything other than a time to rearm and reload? Hamas named their October 7 rampage "The Al-Aqsa Flood." On October 24, seventeen days after Hamas' attack, Hamas spokesman Ghazi Hamad said the following on Lebanese TV, quote, "We must teach Israel a lesson, and we will do this again and again. The Al-Aqsa flood is just the first time, and there will be a second, a third, a fourth," end quote. We are here, in a city that is plagued by too much gun and other forms of violence. And rather than learning from our own experience and demanding that Hamas terrorists abandon their terrorism and seek peace and a better future for the Palestinian people through negotiations and recognition, you are considering a resolution that absolves terrorists and blames their victims. Hamas' leaders have made it clear in their words and their conduct, they are not seeking to achieve peace, and they are not seeking to improve the lives of their own people. In the same interview, Ghazi Hamad told the world Hamas was ready to sacrifice innocent Palestinians to eliminate the state of Israel when he said, quote, "Will we have to pay a price? Yes, and we are ready to pay it. We are called a nation of martyrs, and we are proud to sacrifice martyrs," end quote. Just yesterday, Hamas rejected a two-month ceasefire proposal during which hostages would have been released and more aid would have been provided to the Gazans, the Hamas put in harm's way. Instead of demanding Israel's ceasefire, you should make that demand of Hamas. If you support Ghazi Hamad and Hamas' quest to kill as many Israelis and Palestinians as possible, then support the current resolution. If, however, you value Israeli and Palestinian lives, vote against this resolution, and let's draft one that unites all Chicagoans in the quest for a real peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Amanda Green.
I am Rabbi Amanda Green of Chicago Sinai Congregation. Like many of you, my heart was completely shattered on October 7, and it has continued to shatter every day since. Every week at Chicago Sinai, we pray for the unimaginable suffering of those murdered by Hamas terrorists, those taken hostage, and those innocent civilians in Gaza facing the horrible consequences of their leadership. The God I believe in cries at the death of the innocent and condemns hatred of any kind against any people and yearns for peace for all people living in the Middle East. Let me remind you, there was a ceasefire on October 6. Hamas broke that ceasefire as they celebrated raping women, burning them alive, cutting off their breasts, beheading babies, and kidnapping innocent men, women, and children, including Holocaust survivors. Let me remind you that it is Hamas who continues to violate international laws, using civilians as human shields in hospitals, schools, and mosques. Let me remind you that it is Hamas who released a video of an unconscious and half-naked woman being taken into Gaza in the back of a pickup truck, with men sitting astride her, and another video showing a woman with her wrists and ankles sliced open and her jeans bloodied at the crotch, being led out of a vehicle by heavily armed men. Imagine for a moment if these videos were not of Israeli women, but were videos of Chicago women. Would we sit here and allow people to yell liars? If Hamas puts down their guns, Israel will stop bombing. But if Israel puts down their guns, Hamas will continue to kill until they have killed all Jewish babies, children, men, and women. A one-sided ceasefire that does not take into consideration Hamas' essential commitment to the death and destruction of Israel reminds terrorists everywhere that there are few consequences for massacring, raping, and abducting civilians. I too want an end to this war. I too desperately want the loss of innocent civilian life to cease. But that must also include a call for Hamas to surrender and put down its arms. It must also include an immediate release of the hostages. It must also include a plan for responsible Palestinian leadership to take charge. City council members, you have been elected to protect your citizens of Chicago. What safe place calls for the elimination of another nation? Students in my own community who attend CPS feel like they have to hide their Jewish identities. The anti-Semitism and Islamophobia here in our own city is real, and it is dangerous. Let us instead come together in a community to create opportunities for conversation, rally around common values, advocate for peace and for human life, and that is why I request that if you want to adopt a resolution calling for a ceasefire, that you only support a ceasefire resolution that also calls for Hamas to put down their weapons, immediately release all the hostages, and create a plan for responsible Palestinian leadership to take place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Joanine Karsh.
Good morning. My name is Joana Karsh. I'm a grassroots leader with the Chicago chapter of If Not Now, an organization of American Jews who fight for the rights of Palestinians, because our Jewish values teach us that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, and that freedom and dignity for all Palestinians and Israelis will liberate, not threaten, the Jewish people. Since the horrific atrocities of October 7, and they were horrific, Israel has launched a devastating and highly disproportionate military response in Gaza. Its government has nearly completely cut off the provision of food, water, electricity, and fuel to two-and-a-half million people, which Israel's Defense Minister justified by saying, quote, "We are fighting human animals, and we are acting accordingly." The U.N. warns that this deliberate deprivation of essential resources has put huge swaths of Gaza in famine. Almost two million are displaced, and ten thousand children have been killed by Israel. Because of all of this, I call on alders to support the Uniting for Peace Resolution, calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. I am here to say that collective punishment and war crimes are never okay, no matter who commits them. The city council has condemned the war crimes of October 7. Will we also give voice to the war crimes and anguish that our Palestinian community are grieving? The largest Palestinian-American community in the United States that we have here in Chicagoland. Can we say that Palestinian lives matter, and that the indiscriminate and genocidal war on Gaza must come to a permanent end? Alders, for the last few weeks, you may have been told that Jews who stand up for a ceasefire are fringe and radical, but you should know that in the last week, over nine hundred Jewish Chicagoans have signed an open letter calling for the city council to pass the Uniting for Peace ceasefire resolution. Three of the six Jewish Illinois state legislators who represent parts of Chicago, Robert Peters, Will Gesardi, and Kelly Cassidy, as well as Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, the only Jewish member of Congress representing parts of Chicago, have all called for a ceasefire. We call for a ceasefire for Palestinians and for our people. Many of us have family in Israel. Many of us know people who were taken hostage or killed by Hamas, but we understand that this killing keeps nobody safe. The only way to end the war is to end the war. The only way to stop the genocide is to stop the genocide, and the only way to stop it is with a permanent ceasefire agreement to stop the genocide in Gaza and free the hostages. You cannot bomb your way to peace. And with the time I have left, I would just like to make one more remark. When I was growing up, I was taught about the horrific atrocities of the Holocaust. I was educated about the Holocaust. We mandate Holocaust education in our schools in the state of Illinois.
Mr. Karsh, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Queen Adesuji.
Do you folks hear me?
We can hear you.
My name is Queen Adesuji, and I'm providing this public comment on behalf of Color Change and the Coalition for Police Accountability and Transparency. There's a glaring error in arbitrator Edwin Ben's ruling on arbitration in the police union contract. This error critically undermines the fundamental principles of the Illinois Public Labor Relations Act. In finding that he was legally compelled to award the FOP the right to private closed-door proceedings before FOP-approved arbitrators, when police officers had been found to have unjustifiably killed, assaulted, or framed community members, Mr. Ben found that he had no duty to even consider the public interest and welfare of the people of Chicago. Mr. Ben's award violates the plain language of Section 14 of the PLRA. Section 14, subsection H, lays out a comprehensive framework for arbitration, focusing on various factors that an arbitration panel must consider when there is no agreement between parties or when parties are negotiating a new or amended agreement. The factors expressly include the lawful authority of the employer, the interest and welfare of the public, financial capabilities of the government unit, and any changes in these circumstances during the arbitration proceedings. These factors are not mere suggestions; they are mandatory considerations. There's a paramount public interest in police accountability, transparency, protecting taxpayers from tens of millions of dollars of liability from CPD misconduct, and ultimately public safety. The city of Chicago has the duty to stop a pattern and practice of federal constitutional violations committed by officers who have been protected from discipline for their abuse of members of the public. City data analysis released this week shows that between 2019 and 2022, the city spent $295 million to resolve lawsuits alleging more than 1,000 police officers committed a wide range of misconduct. Over sixty percent of cases in that time period involved at least one officer with repeated claims of misconduct, factors which Mr. Ben ignored. Section 14 of the PLRA does not give arbitrators unrestricted freedom to impose terms of disciplinary disputes. The role of an arbitrator is to facilitate a balanced and just resolution, one that is firmly rooted in the law and takes into account the wide array of factors outlined in Section 14. To suggest otherwise is not only a misinterpretation of the statute, but a gross misinterpretation of the arbitrator's role. Therefore, as we revisit the recent arbitration decision, it is critical that we rectify this misinterpretation. Police violence in Chicago has not just cost taxpayers billions of dollars in liability and legal costs. It has caused irreparable harm to individuals and families. It has cost people their freedom. It has cost people's lives. It has made us all less safe. The people of Chicago have the right to demand an arbitration process that adheres strictly to the letter and spirit of the law, one that takes into consideration the interest and welfare of the public. The city council has a duty to the people of Chicago to reject the arbitrator's award to the FOP and to reject another decade of police impunity in Chicago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Janet Cody.
Janet, please press star six to unmute.
Ms. Cody, can you hear us? Our next speaker is Renua Balisteros.
Thank you, City Council. As your constituent, I am truly appalled that the ceasefire resolution has been delayed. With every passing day, hundreds of people are killed in Gaza by Israel with documented war crimes, using lies that have been long debunked without evidence about sexual assault, beheaded babies, and other fabrications. As a young resident of Chicago, I will never look at my city the same way if we fail on taking a steadfast ethical stance against this madness. The call for a ceasefire has nothing to do with hatred for our Jewish neighbors. In fact, many of them are here today demanding the same thing from you, making a full, clear knowledge that safety for one group cannot depend on the obliteration of another. Holocaust survivors themselves, such as Marion Ingram, have repeated the sentiments incessantly. The age-long persecution of Jewish people is harrowing, it's heartbreaking, it's unfair, but the tragedies they have suffered, they will never justify the decades of land-grabbing, the use of white phosphorus, the collective punishment, the starvation, and the bombing of refugee camps. These are all funded by our tax dollars. We cannot stand it. As residents of the city with the largest Palestinian population in the U.S., we will not keep complaining or denying the pain of our neighbors. These are our friends. These are our coworkers. These are beautiful people who, by a strike of luck and a piece of paper, are not in the conditions of the atrocities we are watching day in and day out on our screens. We are here to embody true solidarity and to assure that the city doesn't fail them. As your constituents, we demand to be on the right side of history and to join San Francisco in passing a ceasefire resolution without delay. I am also here to support our resounding note to police arbitration and to keep transparent and public accountability for our police forces. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Janet Cody. Our next speaker is Sofia Perez.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. I'm thankful to be here in front of you all to speak today. I'm here as a member of Healthihood Chicago and as a servant of the people. I'm here today to ask this council to vote against the arbitration bill. This bill does not involve community. It does not make decisions regarding police misconduct transparent to the public. An opportunity for transparency is important in order to continue better relations between police and community, the communities they serve. But behind closed doors, police will not give themselves sentences equivalent to regular-day citizens who have committed similar acts as them. I ask you to please vote no against the arbitration bill. And as I stand here today, I also stand here in solidarity with the Palestinian community and ask you to vote yes to a ceasefire. Every day, countless men, women, and children are being killed in Gaza. We cannot stall this any longer. A woman, I don't remember her name, but she made a good point today that minutes, hours, they are important. And the longer that this is stalled, the more lives that are being taken. So this is the time in which time is futile. Everyone here, I'm sorry, everyone here that stands in these seats is in a political office in which the people have voted to place you in. Therefore, you are members of a community, and you serve them, and you represent them. You made a commitment to make a difference in this city. And the people have spoken, and they demand a ceasefire now. When you took your oath, I bet you all dreamed of making a difference in this city. I bet at one point in your lives, you dreamt about saving a life. At one, I'm sorry, by voting yes to this ceasefire, you will be saving the lives of thousands, if not millions. And growing up, I know what it's like to have generational trauma, as my grandfather was a survivor of the Holocaust. And I just want to say, "Free Palestine." And in the great words of Chairman Fred Hampton, "All power to the people." All power to the people!
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Omar El Yemeneh.
My name is Omar, a member of the United States Palestinian Community Network. Today, here with everybody, I would like to emphasize on the necessity for this council to uphold its duty to the people they represent. As the many members of the Black, Brown, and immigrant communities have been victims of the police brutality, it is necessary that the police department be held accountable for the unprofessional and brutal actions that transgress the rights and livelihoods of these communities. The only way that can be done is by voting no on the arbitration bill. Private arbitration has proved to be as biased and corrupt as we have seen recently with the Oklahoma Police Department, using arbitration to cover up their corruption and crimes, and CBP is guilty of similar crimes. Secondly, it is disappointing that the city council has not yet voted for a ceasefire amid horrific war crimes, crimes against humanity committed by the settler colonialist state of Israel against the Palestinian people. Israel has been called to the ICJ by South Africa for committing a genocide in front of the whole world, and it is funded by our U.S. tax dollars. Over 25,000 innocent Palestinian men, women, and children have been murdered, and yet we have been passed a ceasefire resolution. It is far overdue, and Chicago could lead as the largest city in the U.S. to do so. It is far overdue, and Chicago could lead as the largest city in the U.S. to do so. We need you all to lead the way other people, Rodriguez, Lasfatta, and Seto, and Fuentes, and Taylor have. Our Palestinian-Arab, Black, and Brown communities ask you to ignore those who publicly say that they want to delay and kill the resolution, and instead be on the right side of history. Make your own history by bypassing this resolution, which will press D.C. to stop funding the genocide and to force Israel to end its murderous war crimes. And further delay will mean thousands of additional Palestinians killed. We need you right now, and yes, to ceasefire, and no to arbitration, and power to the people.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Denise Yvette Serna.
My name is Denise Yvette Serna. I am a citizen of the 11th Ward. I am on the faculty at Loyola University Chicago, at DePaul University Chicago, at the University of Chicago. And I was also awarded a D case grant last year. This city believes that I am a leader, that I am a culture bearer, that I am an organizer, and that I speak for the people, the people who ride the train every day, the people who work for a living, the people who elected you. And so I hope that you will listen to what I have to say. I urge Nicole Lee to stand with the people and vote down the decision to allow CPD officers accused of serious misconduct to have their cases heard in arbitration instead of in front of the Public Police Board. People fought hard to bring greater transparency to this process, and we will not see that stripped away. We want to count on you to vote against the arbitration decision when it comes up for Additionally, Israel has killed over 25,000 Palestinians in three months, and I urge you to vote yes on the ceasefire resolution, SR2023-0006422, presented by Alderperson Rodriguez-Sánchez and Lasfatta. Black and Brown communities have organized in solidarity with our Palestinian siblings for decades, and we will continue to, and your vote should represent our voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Julie Bint Haula.
Hello, my name is Julie Bint Haula, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm here to clear up a few facts. It's ironic to think we're talking about police arbitration and Israel on the same day. The Israeli state themselves admitted that the IDF killed the majority of Israeli civilians on October 7th, a tragedy, that there are no rape victims by Hamas to be found at all, that there is no evidence that 40 babies were beheaded by Hamas. The IDF told lie after lie after lie in a conspiracy, and these people have trained high-ranking officials in the Chicago Police Department. I'm here in support of Alderperson Rosana Rodriguez-Sánchez's ceasefire resolution and a demand to end U.S. support for Israel's genocide of the Palestinian people in Gaza. A ceasefire is the bare minimum. The fact that in this room a vote for a ceasefire is controversial at all is disgusting and revealing, and history will remember those who stood in opposition as the genocide enablers that they are. Delaying this vote due to Holocaust remembrance is a sick perversion of real suffering to shield the most televised genocide ever. This is real disrespect to the history of the Jewish people, equating the colonial apartheid genocidal project that is Israel with the religion of Judaism that is anti-Semitic. The United States was the lone U.N. Security Council member to vote no to a ceasefire resolution last month, exercising its veto power to block the will of billions of the world's people and acting as an impediment to peace. Us here in Chicago want no part of that. A ceasefire is the absolute bare minimum. Again, the underlying problem is not the wording of a resolution or these little petty politics in the city council, but it's an illegal Israeli military occupation of Palestine, an ongoing ethnic cleansing project. We need to think about the urgency of these things. And Israeli officials have been open about their genocidal intent from the beginning. Just in October, the Ministry of Defense said, and I quote, "We are dealing with human animals." Netanyahu said the state of Israel must control the entire area from the river to the sea. When Alderperson Rosana Rodriguez-Sánchez called for freedom for all people, not control, but freedom, from the river to the sea, the city council had more problems with that. Out of all foreign aid ever given out by the United States, Israel had received over 80% of it, and for what? To fund Israel's occupation, to use even Chicago taxpayer dollars so that the U.S. can have a watchdog in the Middle East. We know that Chicago is home to the highest concentration of Palestinians in the country. Just look at the size of the demonstrations in Chicago, tens of thousands of people demanding justice, demanding that you, the city council, listen. You have the chance to stand on the side of the people of your city, to stand on the side of justice and self-determination. Please vote yes.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Speaker, no sign.
Thank you very much. Resolutions.
Your Honor, there are no further speakers.
We have three resolutions today, celebrating Lane Tech Girls' Flag Football Team of the life and legacy of Reginald Wayne Sharp Sr. and International Holocaust Remembrance Day. So for this, the chair will recognize Alderwoman Dow as she moves for a temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions. Thank you very much. It has been moved and accepted, and hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of resolutions and will go straight to remarks. The city council, our first resolution is congratulating the Lane Tech Girls' Flag Football Team on their state championship win. Are there any Alders that wish, the chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am immensely proud to be associated with this resolution. The girls' flag football team at Lane Tech High School was founded just two years ago, and since then, they have had quite the run, two-time state champions, with the most recent title coming on October 29th of last year. Flag football is one of the fastest-growing sports today, not just in the U.S. but in the entire country. It is making its Summer Olympics debut in 2028 in Los Angeles, and I know at least one Lane Tech athlete with us today, Senior Sadia Rodriguez. Can you say hello? Who is hoping to make that team. She is the number-one player in the entire state as voted by coaches. And she is the first-ever recipient of a Changemaker Scholarship, so needless to say, the college or university that accepts you is going to be a very lucky one indeed. For so many Chicagoans, youth sports are an indispensable part of life. I know we have a number of coaches here, Alderman Beal, Alderman Napolitano, who live there day in and day out. They, and so many of us, can attest to the fact that sports are empowering. They remind all participants of the heights that they can reach when they work hard and persevere through challenges. In addition, our sports help improve confidence, foster teamwork, and provide a sense of community. I am thrilled to see, Mr. President, our city continue to increase investments in girl's sports in particular, and can't wait to see the opportunities that await my four-year-old daughter, Amina, when she is the same age as the accomplished athletes with us here today. I wanted to express my thanks to Joey McDermott, Senior Zora McDermott's dad, for helping shine a spotlight on this team's accomplishments. In addition to being a proud father and a girls' flag football coach at Prosser, he is a proud resident of the 29th Ward, Alderman Talia Farrell. My congratulations to the team's coaches, Caroline, Sean, and Tim, as well as their manager, Andrea, and my congratulations again to the Lane Tech 2023 Girls' Flag Football Team. You make our city proud. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution, always proud of our student athletes. Couple of our colleagues in the corner saying Lane Tech is the best high school in the city, and I would have to agree with that today, since Simeon is an institution, so we're not in the same category. But no, I am so excited. What you all have accomplished is huge. I think the girls' flag football started about, what, two years ago, if I'm not mistaken? And as I watched some of those games, I mean, you all are good. I mean, you all are good. The speed that you all run at for nobody to grab your flag is impressive. But also, you all create teamwork, you learn leadership skill, and I'm also impressed with your coaches. I tell people, a lot of people say, I don't see how you can be Alderman dealing with a lot of people. I don't see how people can be coaches, because you're dealing with some real stuff. But that's great leadership and bringing them together for a championship. And so I want to applaud you all. Keep winning, keep doing what you are doing, and I wish you much success at your next levels. God bless you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, ladies, and welcome to the City Council of Chicago. We're so honored to have you guys here today. I am a Whitney Young Dolphin. We're playing basketball today, so, you know, I'm just going to have to keep it right here. But that doesn't stop me from being so immensely proud of you as a former high school athlete myself. We didn't have flag football, because, you know, that only came around two years ago. I don't want to tell you when I graduated high school, but I played volleyball. And what I know from being a former athlete and a student at a competitive school, it takes something. It takes something to balance all of that and to, I'm going to say it in city council, I shouldn't, but to be as badass as you are, to be playing flag football, to be being pioneers in this, I think it's incredible, and that you won the state championship is even more incredible. So congratulations, savor every single one of these wins, take it with you forward everywhere that you go. Only great things ahead of you, so congratulations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Congratulations. This is quite an awesome feat. I think I'd like to celebrate the more of the I-can-do process. There's no sport that anyone can or cannot play. Whatever you put your mind to, you can do. For the last 11 years, I've been coaching women's hockey, and to me, there is nothing better to see somebody strive in a sport that a lot of people say you can't do, and you're doing it. And you're doing it with style, you're doing it with class, and you're doing it now with a trophy, too. Congratulations. Keep it up, keep going. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. If anybody feels the need to come and stand and talk around me when I'm speaking, feel free right now. Mr. President, I want to congratulate everybody on this great honor, ladies. Congratulations. They have the number-one player in the state. That's really amazing. Congratulations, ladies. My good friend Joe McDermott, I'm his former Alderman, we've been friends for a long time. But unfortunately, I don't mean to rain on your parade, but CPS in their infinite wisdom wants to eliminate selective enrollment schools, so who knows if we'll see another group of Lane Tech Girls here five, six years from now. So enjoy the moment, congratulations. I hope some of you, I don't know, they're giving out scholarships for this now, so congratulations. Just honored to be here, sitting with you. So best of luck to everybody in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Vazquez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. One, I want to congratulate you so much for what you've accomplished. I think, you know, we spend time here celebrating folks who have been formally called champions, formerly gotten the awards, formerly been Most Valuable Player. I think we really should see that it's actually a recognition of the work that you all do to get to that position, that you all carry yourselves as champions and have done so since day one that has gotten you to this point. So I want to commend you for that, for being more athletic than I ever have been or ever will be in life. Congratulations and salute, ladies. And as someone who graduated from Lane Tech, it actually hits my heart even deeper. I say that, and I apologize really quickly, as somebody who was a Lane Tech student from a selective enrollment, they didn't try to find out if I was good at dodging or ducking. They didn't pick that kind of selective when it comes to sports. We could have larger conversations about that at other times, but let's not take away from the point that you all are champions, period, regardless of what school you're in. And so I want to thank you so much for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? All right, seeing no other hands, I stand with this body, city council, to speak to this resolution. I'm so proud of the Lane Tech Girls' Flag Football Team for winning the state championship this year, the unstoppable, long streak of wins, 21 to 1, was that the, wow, yeah, 21 and 1. How about that? That's an impressive record. And then to go on to the state championship game and win 30 to 0. I mean, the last time we had a lopsided win like that, the Bears were Super Bowl champions. So thank you for bringing a football championship back to the city of Chicago. You know, sports has a tremendous history in the city. The Lane Tech Girls' Flag Football Team, you have contributed so much to the rising popularity of flag football. I'm not sure if people are aware, but the Summer Olympics of 2028 will feature flag football, and that has a lot to do with the work that you all have accomplished. But the lessons that you learned throughout this experience on and off the field will serve you well throughout your life. As a public school teacher and as someone who recognizes that everyone doesn't show up to school to come to Mr. Johnson's social studies class to discuss the five causes of the American Revolution, sometimes you also have to have other curricular activities that continue to feed off of the talent as well as the unique skills that each student brings. And the people who are responsible for pulling out the very best are not just our parents, but our educators. So thank you to Caroline, Sean, and Tim for your work inspiring and mentoring and leading this team to victory. So I wish you the best of success. Special shout-out to Zora McDermott. She was on my T-ball team when, I don't know if we were 21 and 1 that year, but I feel like I at least contributed to her athletic prowess. So congratulations again. Let's hear it for our Lane Tech Flag Football Girls Championship Team. Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell, can I get a passage for this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. Our next resolution, our next resolution is honoring the life of Reginald Wayne Sharp Sr. Our next resolution is honoring the life of Reginald Wayne Sharp Sr. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution. Not sure if my colleagues had an opportunity to fully read this resolution, and if you have, you're probably saying, why are we having a resolution for someone who passed away and died in another state? The reason being is because my pastor, Pastor Reginald Sharp, is a pastor here in Chicago. But more importantly, it's because not only did he lose his father, in the same year he lost his grandmother, and recently he lost his aunt. And so it goes back to a sermon that I heard back in 2003 in Dallas. It was called "Leading While Bleeding." Who takes care of the leader when they're bleeding? And I want to thank Fellowship and everybody that's here on the day is there to say in the box, thank you for supporting this pastor, thanks for flying down to Atlanta, thanks for covering him. But there is nothing like, and I want to congratulate and thank the president, President, our mayor, for standing up and doing this resolution to let you know that your city pastor has you smothered, covered, and surrounded. And so that's why we're here today, because it's not only because he's a pastor at Fellowship, he also helps lead this city. We're dealing with so many different issues, and he gets poured on for those issues, from feeling the homeless, for clothing people, doing all of these things. And we have to remember, when you're bleeding, when the leader is bleeding, who's helping the leader? And so we encourage your heart today. We ask God to just continue to cover you, to heal your heart as you're touching other people while you're going through. So I love you, I appreciate you, and I'm honored to be one of your deacons and to serve under you. May God bless you and keep you.
Thank you, Alderman Deacon David Moore. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to stand up and be associated with this resolution. I told Pastor Sharp, when he came in, I wasn't gonna say anything, but my heart led me to say something. Fellowship is located in the Third Ward, and Reverend Sharp has been a great addition to Fellowship, taking it to a new level. And I wanted to say that as long as you remember your Father, He will never leave you, and that it is a sonship and a relationship, and we will always have you at Fellowship. So thank you so much, and I appreciate you and my sympathy on behalf of the residents of the Third Ward.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Pastor William Hall.
Mayor, today, Reggie, I just want to say to you, as a colleague who carries a cross with you, this cross of grief, we know, our book tells us, the Bible, that when we mourn, we receive comfort. And so may you always receive comfort in Chicago, Atlanta, and wherever you go. And just know, as our chairwoman just reminded us, that as long as you remember that great Father of yours, He's always gonna be proud with you. God bless you, man.
Thank you very much. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Seeing no other hands, this council has spoken very eloquently regarding this resolution, and as we recognize the life and legacy of Mr. Reginald Sharp Sr., who enriched the spiritual fabric of our city and left behind an indelible mark on the lives of those that he has served, it is truly my honor. Mr. Sharp, as a devout member within our faith community, as a devoted father and husband and uncle and cousin and friend, he truly imbibes who we are as a people. A man deeply rooted in his faith, he imparted his beliefs, his values into his family, and especially his son, Reginald Sharp Jr., who is the senior pastor of the historic Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church. Reginald Sharp Sr.'s life has been a life full of leadership and good works. His son, his wife, his family, and community have all been profoundly impacted by his life. If we all could be so blessed to leave that type of mark. So we should strive to emulate Mr. Sharp's integrity, strengthen humility and faith. And today, we pray for his family, his loved ones, as those who continue to grieve the loss of Mr. Sharp. We pray that you find comfort, that you find happy memories, that you find peace of mind, and knowing that Mr. Sharp not only contributed so much to the beauty and prosperity of our great city, we know that he is simply resting in the bosom of Abraham. And so our city is here for the Sharp family, whatever you need. And thank you for being such an incredible help and support to so many lives. And so we honor Mr. Sharp. Alderman Mitchell, can we get a passage for a rising vote for this resolution?
Mr. President, I request passage of this resolution by a rising vote.
Should please rise in support of this resolution.
Here's a Mr. Sharp, you all.
And finally, you have a resolution commemorating the International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Deborah Silverstein.
Can we wait for them, too?
I can't see you around the corner. Oh, I see, people are coming in now. Thank you.
Are you ready? Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution. January 27th will mark 79 years since the liberation of Auschwitz, the largest Nazi killing center and concentration camp complex. We commemorate this event with International Holocaust Remembrance Day, a day to remember those who died in the horrors of the Holocaust and to honor those who survived to rebuild. You will also notice many of the buildings downtown lit up yellow over the next several nights in honor of Holocaust Remembrance Day. Thank you to BOMA for including this important commemoration in the heart of our city. We are joined at council today by the families of Holocaust survivors and by scholars who have dedicated their lives to documenting the Holocaust and teaching its lessons to others. Here today are Bernard Cherkasov of the Illinois Holocaust Museum. Many of my fellow Aldermen joined me recently on a tour of the Holocaust Museum in Skokie and understand how vital its mission is towards combating Holocaust denial and distortion. We are also joined by Ari Seget, Missy Williams, and Howard Gerke-Mavith. Close enough?
Close.
Okay. Of 3D Chicago, a group for the grandchildren of Holocaust survivors in Chicago. Their grandparents endured the worst atrocity humanity has ever committed, but they did not give up hope. They saw the destruction of their entire world, yet they had the courage to build back a life, a family, and a community. The 50th Ward and the entire city of Chicago are eternally grateful for their heroism. This year's theme for International Holocaust Remembrance Day is recognizing the extraordinary courage of victims and survivors of the Holocaust. The world is paying tribute to the bravery of those who stood up to the Nazis and defied their efforts to dehumanize their victims. One hero we recognize is Fredal Dicker Brandeis, a Jewish artist and educator. While in a horrific ghetto camp, she secretly, she held secret art classes for children, allowing the innocent youth to briefly escape their imprisonment and deprivation to imagine and create. Tragically, most of those children did not survive the Holocaust, perishing in the concentration camps. Dicker Brandeis was also murdered by the Nazis, but before being deported to Auschwitz in a last act of defiance, she hid much of the art the children had created. Due to her bravery, thousands of drawings and paintings survived the war. I actually have a copy of some of the art that the children drew while they were in concentration camps. Can I hold that right? Horribly antisemitism is sharply on the rise. Anti-Semitic incidents skyrocketed 360% since October 7th. The ADL tracked more antisemitic acts in the last three months than they would usually see in an entire year. This trend is deeply alarming and needs immediate action by the police and every elected official in this room. We are also seeing unprecedented levels of Holocaust denial across the globe, as well as a new trend of distortion where people attempt to diminish the scope of the Holocaust or make false comparisons to current events. Make no mistake, Holocaust denial and distortion, and I will have decorum. Holocaust denial and distortion are forms of antisemitism and must be condemned and combated on the strongest possible means. I represent Chicago's 50th Ward, which houses the largest Jewish community in the state of Illinois. Like many Jewish community, like any Jewish community, the 50th Ward remains haunted by the memory of the Holocaust. Walk down our streets, and you won't find a family that did not lose a grandparent, uncle, aunt, or other loved ones to the Nazis' attempted genocide. As a Jewish woman myself, my family was also deeply scarred by the Holocaust. My mother's aunts and uncles were all brutally murdered. The point of International Holocaust Remembrance Day is to honor those who survived, to remember those we lost, and to join together around the globe with one voice and say, "Never again." Never again... Never again will we allow evil to overpower good and hate to overcome kindness and decency. Never again...
Please, should we give some decency to allow our Alder to finish her remarks, please? Please continue.
Never again will the world stand by while antisemitism and bigotry grow and spread like a cancer. I can assure you that the Holocaust Remembrance Day is very real for the residents of the 50th Ward. It's very real for the people joining us today, and it's very real for the people coming together this week to say "never again" to hatred, intolerance, and bigotry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alder... Thank you very much. Please allow for our resolution to move forward and to allow for our Alders to speak. All right, if you cannot respect that, then I'm gonna respectfully ask that our Sergeant of Arms keep and maintain order. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Mr. President, I appreciate you taking charge and trying to get some decorum in here. Thank you. I don't know what to say. I mean, I went to the Holocaust Museum with Deb and a few of our other colleagues, and we saw some stuff that is hard to, basically scarred for life forever, what we saw. And we have all seen World War II movies and the brutality that happened to Jews back in World War II. I just don't even think we really have a clue to the type of brutality these people have experienced, the suffering, the torture. So I just want to say, I support you, Deb. I support your people. You know where I stand. I stand with Israel, with God's chosen people. Are we gonna threaten to throw them out again, Sergeant at Arms?
No, Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, people. Show a little respect.
Alderman Spazado, please direct your comments this way.
Okay.
I would respectfully ask...
Well, then I would ask you and the Sergeant at Arms to throw these people out.
Alderman Spazado, please direct your comments towards me. I've heard you. I would respectfully ask, those that are in the chambers, this is now the third warning. If you cannot respect this process, then we would have to ask you to kindly be removed, okay? All right. Alderman Spazado, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope that's the third and final warning, but thank you. So once again, just peace be to your people. I know you've been enduring thousands of years of persecution, and I'm just here to support you, so thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Very glad to rise in support of this resolution. During the time before I was an Alderperson, that I worked with the Jane Addams Senior Caucus, I actually worked with a lot of seniors along the lakefront who had come from Ukraine, who had come from the USSR, who had lost so many family members to the Holocaust. And it was troubling and personal to hear their stories. And to say "never again" today makes me profoundly sad because I think about the violence visited in Rwanda against the Tutsi people by the Hutu. I think about the Holodomor and the genocide experienced by the Ukrainian people. I think about the fact that our ability to commit violence in the name of ethnicity and race has never been more powerful or alive, and it grieves me to see that we have struggled so hard to learn this lesson. I want to believe that it remains within our cultural and social and spiritual imagination to view every human being as fully human, to view everyone in the image of God. I want to believe that, in spite of the evidence, I remain hopeful. But I do believe that it is within our capacity to live into what is said in the Talmud in Sanhedrin 37, that anyone who saves one life saves the world entire. I believe that we can be those people, that our ability for compassion and humanity and justice is within our grasp. And so in that light, in that hope that that can be true for us, I stand in support of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise also to support this resolution and my colleague Deb Silverstein and Holocaust survivors in my ward and throughout the city and country. I was also a part of the group that went to the museum this fall with Deb and others, and I have to say, if you haven't been there, you need to be there. You need to see these stories firsthand. It's very powerful and very moving. And I want to give a shout-out to my constituent and friend Bernard Cherkasov, the CEO of the museum, who is doing amazing work there, just like he did at Cradles, Crayons, and Equality Illinois, in continuing your legacy of service. And I think we, as a young person and a student of history, I remember learning about the Holocaust and thinking, "Never again," and what do we have to do to get to a place where we never have to do this again? And I wish I had as much hope maybe as some of my colleagues because I think we're in a time that's very, very tough right now. I'm in a room where people were cheering on the Al-Aqsa flood, right? I'm in a room where we've had a lot of very angry conversations or very angry shouting that is not helpful, certainly as we want to work toward a long-term peaceful solution to the issues that face us. I want to just quickly recognize my constituent who passed last year, Danny Wolfe, who was one of the youngest survivors of the Holocaust. He was born in a camp in Czechoslovakia, came to this country at the age of seven, and because his English was the best, he was the one doing the books and making orders for the family business known as the Bagel, which operated several locations and has a new owner in my ward on Broadway. You know, his story is one of thousands, millions, that we need to continue to tell. You know, his story is one of thousands, millions, that we need to continue to tell, that we need to draw some hope from in what has been a very dark hour, as we vow to, again, never forget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I've been to the Holocaust Museum. Skokie is like a neighbor ward to me. Deb, I rise in support of you, and I rise in support of your remembrance ordinance or resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders? The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the City Council, and good morning to our guests. I rise in support of this resolution and in support of remembering all the factors that take place in our lives that bring us to a point where we can look back and say, "How did we get to a place where we had no problem killing 6 million individuals, 1.5 million of which were children?" I rise today because of a fact that, while I have been to the Holocaust Museum, I also, in July of 2022, went to Yad Vashem, which is the Israeli Holocaust Museum. It is a truly profound and solemn place where you look at not just the boxcars and the chains and the silverware that was stolen, but you look at the map, you look at the words, you look at the narratives that were changed years in advance of the Holocaust. When we ask ourselves, "Why did this happen? How did this happen?" Look around today, and as you see individuals twisting words and narratives and playing the victim when they are the aggressor, and pointing at individuals, blaming them for their... Mr. Chairman? That's number four, Mr. President. Our rules of decorum, Mr. President, say disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. It has been permitted numerous times, and I ask that you clear the individuals who are responsible for that behavior.
Thank you. Please continue, Alderman Lopez.
Are you going to maintain decorum, sir?
I'm going to give you the opportunity to continue to speak.
Are you going to maintain decorum, sir? Because I cannot continue if I'm going to be interrupted.
Decorum is maintained. Please continue, Alderman Lopez.
Proof of what I speak is right here in this room. When we allow individuals to change the narrative, when we allow individuals to point blame and make victim, make themselves victims, to give them the authority, the moral authority, to excuse behavior that leads us down a path that we've seen already in our history, this is where we are. This is where we're at today. This is where we're at in this room, Mr. President. Failure to stand up will be seen in history. That much I agree with one of the commentators disrupting earlier. We cannot forget that there were millions of opportunities to stand up and be counted, to do the right thing, to stop at any moment. But what brought the Holocaust to its full fruition was that so many good people chose to sit down. So many good people who thought they were doing right simply went along with the narratives because they were too cowardly to stand up and do what was right. We see that more and more in our city. We see that more and more in this room. We see that more and more, especially in light of everything that is going on now, when we can't even bring ourselves to say kidnapping infants is wrong. Mr. President, this resolution isn't simply about remarking what happened 79 years ago because I'm sure on the 79th year and one day after, everyone assumed that we would never be in the same spot that we find ourselves in today, where we are once again pointing the finger at a people as if they are the root of all evil, where we are trying to justify through changing the narrative, through manipulating social media, and by equivocating at every turn what we should be standing up morally to fight. It is obvious when we have to stand up, Mr. President. It is obvious when we have to tell people that they are wrong. And it is obvious that this council needs to do a better job at standing up, recognizing its place in history, as whether or not it will go down as an enabler, an apologist, or some body that is willing to stand up and be counted when it matters most. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder. The chair recognized Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I make comments, I would like to ask that members who are seated, not council chambers, but everyone else, I understand the, how natural it feels to want to respond to certain comments. I think there's things that occur when members of our council are addressing certain audiences that may feel, may have other audiences feel different. So just in a level of respect, I would ask for that to start off with. I am not eager to get on the microphone and talk about a situation that I think is extremely nuanced, extremely delicate, and people receive differently across the city and across the globe. As a city who has the population that it does, we represent all of our neighbors. And so first, I want to be here in, in support of the resolution itself. I think in thinking about what we're going through in this moment, we can't also have that takeaway from what it means to actually remember folks who have gone through so much and what the Holocaust means in general to all of us. I have members of my family that are Jewish. We have these conversations. And so I think we have to acknowledge not only a remembrance of, and I say this as calmly as possible, not only remembrance of the results that have led us to all focus on what a tragedy and what atrocity it is, but also the climate that led to something like that even being possible, which is folks making comments and allowing things to go into that direction. There are certain things that we see, not just in this moment, but throughout history, where people do remain silent in the face of injustice if they view it as not affecting their own people they identify with. And I think when people ignore that of any group that goes through it, it leads to the consequences that have shown us throughout history, we don't want to go down. And so when we support our Jewish family members and our siblings, it is a recognition of really the horrors that a people have to go through because everyone marginalized them and didn't, didn't stick. I don't want to say "stand up" because "stand up" is an ableist term, and I recognize our disabled family members well, but people who feel that we're not standing shoulder with them when they go through marginalization, that has led to, what led to the Holocaust and why we're here remembering those atrocities. When I hear, you know, "never again" and "always remember," it means never again having those same, that same environment grow so that no one goes through that kind of persecution. And I think there's, again, please, I don't.
Please address me, Alder. Please, we got you.
Sorry, my apologies. My apologies, Mr. President.
We're maintaining decorum. We're fine.
Absolutely. No, that's not a decorum.
Look here.
Thank you. The reason why I say that is because we don't do enough here as a council, as a city, to model the behavior we would want to see happening globally. We can't sit down and have these conversations in a way that doesn't lead to someone making a comment that then inflames someone else, that leads to a tit for tat, that leads to the lack of a table to even meet upon to find those level, that level of agreement. And if we can't do that at this level about any resolution, what hope do we have for the rest of the globe to do so? So I want to make sure that as we have these conversations with each other, knowing that we have our Jewish populations that have gone historically through marginalization, through that level of atrocity, knowing that we have our Palestinian siblings that are feeling similarly in the current moment, that we create the space where we can have these conversations, acknowledging both, knowing that the things that people suffer through is separate from the decisions their governments make at times. We have civilians and innocent lives, Israeli, Palestinian, all of the above, that have been taken from us, that have gone through persecution, all because of smaller groups that run governments making decisions. And so I would really hope that we are grounded in the fact that we are not different, we are not dissimilar. When we're talking about what we think one side does, there's people on the other side doing the same. And if we take the time to pause and model the behavior we want to see across the globe, maybe we end up with a solution that sets the example and move away from the kind of environment that led to a Holocaust. And I think that is how we can pay recognition, tribute, and also remembrance to that spirit. And so I thank you, and I thank everyone for hearing me out. Again, it is very challenging, but I have faith in us to figure out a way to navigate where we don't fall for those same kind of pitfalls. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Byron Sigcho Lopez.
First, let me raise in support of this resolution. And I was not planning to speak necessarily on this item, but I do think, just given some of the behavior, some of the members in the council, they should certainly model and certainly act for what they preach. So if history is any indicator for us, indeed, as some of the colleagues have said, to act when such atrocities and war crimes are committed, I do think that the council should have at least a little bit more, some members of the council, more empathy, more respect, and more focus on the history of the facts before making such remarks, especially when we see members of the audience who have seen family members killed, brutalized. So I wonder what is that decorum? I wonder what is that decorum when we're watching genocide in front of us? It is not to watch in the past so it doesn't happen in the future, and it doesn't happen now. So today, to all our city council members, I hope that we remember today and the same words that have been used to prevent atrocities, to prevent another Holocaust, to prevent genocide. And it is not antisemitic to stand up for human rights, to remember what has happened in the past. So we're not seeing these kind of comments and asking for decorum when the same behavior or some of the members of the council, it is appalling. So today, not only like to rise in support of this resolution, but also making sure that some of the same members of the council were talking about what has happened in the past, to make sure that we speak about atrocities, that we don't miss every step to prevent another atrocity, just like the Holocaust and the thousands and millions of people who lost their lives, so that we honor them and we remember them, so this doesn't happen never again to nobody, nowhere. And the US, our country, has a responsibility to stop funding or looking the other way in such atrocities. So to everybody on the council, and it's hard to maintain the quorum when we see these atrocities in front of our eyes, let's make a commitment, and we'll come back to this very floor, so that we act on our words and not continue to pandering for votes instead of calling for the US to stop funding war and despair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution, reminded of the words of Dr. King, who we just celebrated, is as he said, "I would not, I may not remember the words of my enemies, but I would not forget the silence of my friends." And so here, I didn't want to remain silent because of the friends I have in this community. Our colleague Deborah Silverstein, who's always someone I can talk to, someone that's even keel. And then I think of today, my brother Dave Appel and his family, who we have countless honest conversations. And by saying that, we get to this thing, a threat, an injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And so that's what we're reminded here to this day of this resolution. And as I have these conversations with my close friends, and these are these moments that you address this because you have to have conversations, you have to talk. And it reminds me, when we can have these conversations, that not only we say "never again" to this Holocaust, we also say "never again" to slavery. We continue to remind, we continue to...
Yeah, right, right. Right, right.
We continue.
Thank you very much, please.
We continue to have those conversations and work so people can remember that any time we try to rewrite history, and that's what our colleague is standing here saying, "Let's not have people rewrite history and act like things that exist." But as we say that, I say the same thing, and I'm able to have those conversations with my friends and saying, "Let's not rewrite history and what people acting like slavery didn't exist or certain people didn't have a part of it." But when we, when we're able to, when we're able to stand up for resolutions like this, we're able to have those conversations and bring these forces together, so none of this will be "never again." So I thank you so much, Alderman Silverstein, for bringing this resolution forward. God bless you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Gilviegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I stand here today in strong support of this resolution. This upcoming Saturday, January 27th, is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. This day marks the 79th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz concentration camp. On that day, we remember the over 6 million Jews who were murdered by the Nazis during the Holocaust, as well as the millions of others people murdered by the Nazis. We're reminded how for years, Nazis and their collaborators carried out this mass genocide, while much of the world turned a blind eye to these atrocities. Today, with the alarming rise in antisemitism and Holocaust denial across the world, it is imperative that we as a city take a stand and say "never again." There are over 300,000 Jewish people who call Chicago home. Many are direct descendants of Holocaust survivors. This is their story, and it's the story of so many Jewish people around the world. Today and every day, we remember. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of the resolution and also to concur in the words that Alderman Moore stated as relates to community that I'm a member of and not wanted to repeat the same, repeat the same thing. I think it is incumbent on us to all know and understand that we all have a different past and how we arrived to get to this point. However, as Alderman Moore stated, it's the injustice and the silence that will always be remembered. So as we stand in support of our colleague from the 50th Ward, let's also remember, we must stand for all of those who face similar circumstances in these situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other alders that wish to, are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Seeing other hands would like to speak to this resolution as we recognize January 27th, the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, the liberation of an entire people group, the hands of real severe brutality. I'm honored that we have a vibrant, a very proud Jewish community. Many people in this community have been directly impacted by the Holocaust as descendants of Holocaust survivors and victims and refugees. As we gather to commemorate this day, we are honoring the memory and the legacy of Holocaust victims, survivors. We do that through the remarkable stories, the history, the resilience. We are also making good on the promise to ensure that this legacy and this history is not only remembered for today, but for generations to come as we work to combat the distortion and revisionism of history. And today, we stand with our Jewish community to remember and honor the victims and survivors and all those impacted by the horrors of the Holocaust. And so with that, Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move patches in the honor.
Here are no objections. So ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications.
Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, to the Honorable, the City Council, the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Charles Erle apartment projects. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Parkside Phase III Affordable Housing Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended redevelopment agreement with Paneros LLC to provide TIF funds for redevelopment of the former Pioneer Bank Building. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide TIF funds for improving at Percy Julian High School. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request to Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Redevelopment, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class L tax incentive for property located at 465 West Sarmac Road. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 4130 South Morgan Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 6949 South Martin Luther King Drive. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties for adjacent neighborhoods through the Chai Blocker Build Land Sale Platform. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here in ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance and loan restructuring for Erie Cooperative LP to preserve the Herald Washington Unity Cooperative Apartments. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing, transmit here in ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned land, execution of a redevelopment agreement with Home and Housing LLC for affordable housing development. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of extended right-of-entry agreement with DL 3 Realty Advisors LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Director of Administrative Hearings, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Housing Authority to continue hearing tenant grievances. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, I transmit here with the 2024 Annual Special Events Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a right-of-way acquisition for the Archer Avenue and Belt Railroad Company of Chicago Grade Separation Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an acquisition of temporary easements needed for the Chicago Hallset Improvement Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Chief Sustainability Officer, I transmit here with, together with Alderman Haddon and Martin, an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding limitation on combustion in new buildings and existing buildings of significant additions. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the joint committee. After two committees have been called, this item will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Lisette Castaneda, Commissioner of the Department of Housing. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance and appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Sandra Blakemore as Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Tom Carney as Commissioner of the Chicago Department of Transportation. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I've committed, I've appointed Alfonso Connor Jr. as Commissioner of the Department of Water Management. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Jose Torado as Executive Director of the Office of Emergency Management Communications. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be, will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Chicago Emergency Telephone System Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. I C D Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents are filed in my office relating to the respective subject designated as follows. Determination Certificate of the City of Chicago Regarding First Amendment to Revolving Line of Credit Agreement with RBC Capital Markets LLC and Royal Bank of Canada is to financial note of December 28, 2023, aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $225 million. Determination Certificate of the City of Chicago Regarding Second Amendment to Revolving Line of Credit Agreement with Wells Fargo Bank. National Association is to financial note of December 29, 2021, aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $225 million. Comprehensive annual financial report to the City of Chicago, to City College of Chicago for fiscal year June 30, 2023. Follow-up to Office of Inspector General's Audit Report of Department of Planning and Development Administration Neighborhood Opportunity Fund Small Grants Program. Follow-up to the Office of Inspector General's Review of Compliance with City of Chicago's Video Release Policy for Us to Enforce Incidents. Office of Inspector General's Explainer to Understanding City of Chicago's Response to Sewer Cave and Complaints. Office Inspector, Inspector General's Quarterly Report for Period ended December 31, 2023. I C D Clerk Anna Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters at which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on December 13, 2023, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on January 24, 2024 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I C D Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that actions considered by the City Council, a special meeting held on December 14, 2023, which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on January 24, 2024 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I C D Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that the authorized imposition of a tax levy approval of a year 2024 budget, the execution of a service provider agreement, a special service area number 10, which were passed by the City Council on December 13, 2023, requested to be published in a special pamphlet, was published in a special pamphlet form by December 14, 2023. I C D Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action. Zoning classification of particular areas, we refer to the Committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Claims against the City of Chicago, we refer to the Committee on Finance, recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for designation of 202 South State Street Chicago Landmark, which we refer to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Recommendation by the Commission on Chicago Landmarks for designation of 220 South State Street as a Chicago landmark, which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much. Community reports. For community reports, we'll start with finance. The Chair recognizes Finance Chairperson Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting in a subject matter hearing on January 24, 22, 2024. The following items received do pass a recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning the designation of municipal depositories for the City of Chicago and the Chicago Board of Education for fiscal year 2024. Mr. President, unless there is someone that wishes to speak to this matter, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Seeing no hands, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. Please raise your hand if you need assistance. I will now call anyone who has not voted on the e-device for a voice vote. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is a yes. Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Curtis.
Yes.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Riley. Alderman Knutson.
Yes.
Alderman Knutson is a yes. Alderman Beal.
Yes.
Alderman Beal is a yes. Anyone else in chambers? Going once, going twice? All right, the voting is now closed.
There are 47 yays, zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell for reconsider this vote.
Mr. President, I move reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsider, consideration of this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is the substitute ordinance concerning the issuance of the city's second lien wastewater transmission revenue bond, Series 2024. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
All right, seeing no hands, but the Chair does recognize Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request to be added to the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The clerk will make that indication. Seeing no other hands regarding this motion, so ordered.
Item number three and four consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and denial of payments of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Seeing no hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of December 2023. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number 6A is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Brown versus Bryant in the amount of $300,000. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exceptions of Alderman Moore, Quinn, Curtis, Cardona, Spazato, and Nugent, who all wish to be recorded as voting no.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for a roll call vote on this item.
On the voting is now open, the voting is now open. Hit refresh. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. If you need help, please raise your hand. I will now call on anyone who has not voted using their e-device. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is a yes. Alderman, Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alder Robinson is a yes. Alderman Knutson?
Yes.
Great. Alderman Knutson is a yes. The voting is now closed.
There are 33 yays, 16 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor to reconsider signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Yes.
Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 6B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Jeffrey Hague versus City of Chicago in the amount of $375,000. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 6C is an order authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Maya Kirk versus City of Chicago in the amount of $2 million. I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Conway and Alderman Taylor, who wish to be recorded as voting no.
All right, besides those three, despite the division, this motion passes, so ordered.
Item number 6D is an order authorizing Corporation Council to execute and to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Gabray Carter as special administrator of the estate of Witfield Marshall, deceased, versus the City of Chicago in the amount of $5 million. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Conway, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Despite the division, here are no objections, so ordered.
The Committee on Finance also met on January 22 for a subject matter hearing to discuss municipal depositories. No votes were taken. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairwoman Dow. The next committee is Budget Government Operations. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, reporting for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on January 23, 2024. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for year 2024 amendment within Fund 925. I move passage of these, this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two will be held in committee. Item number three is a communication regarding a proposed ordinance concerning the transfer of funds within the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights for year 2023. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Seeing, hearing no objections, Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I simply want to be recorded as having voted aye on the first item on the Committee on Finance agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we'll make sure to add Alderman Riley as a yes favorite vote on the first item. Hearing no objections to the last motion, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The next committee is Ec-... Thank you very much. The next committee is Economic Capital Technology Development. The chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development on Tuesday, January 29th, January 9th, rather, 2024, the committee held a meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one and two on the report is the appointment of Sierra Boat Wright as Commissioner of Planning and Development, as well as the, a member of the Community Development Commission. I think we should wait till she comes into the-
Yeah, that's fine.
Mayor, did she leave already or what? Mr. President, we want to make sure that she didn't leave already, so that, you know.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Chairman Viegas with your motion again.
Mr. President, I'll repeat it since the-
Yep.
-Economic Commissioners in the room. So item one and two on the report are the appointment of Sierra Boat Wright as both Commissioner of Planning Development, as well as a member of the Community Development Commission, collectively voted on by the members and introduced by Mayor Johnson at November 1st, 2023 City Council meeting. If there are any other Aldermen that like to speak prior, I reserve the right to close.
Very well. Any Alders that wish to speak to this appointment? Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this appointment. Not knowing Ms. Boat Wright previously, but in life, sometimes it's good to have people that know people, that you can trust, that say good things about people. My pastor used to say, Reverend Clay Evans, your name will get somewhere before you do, so keep a good name. You have kept a good name, and because people that I respect, respect you. And because of that, and then our conversation that we had, I'm definitely in full of, in support of this resolution. I look forward, and one of the things I heard you say in our meeting is that you are pro-development, you are about development. I always tell people I am a social service baby, from welfare to projects, but one thing I believe in is giving somebody a job. And you can build, give people jobs when you build, when you develop, so you can get them out of being dependent to self-sufficiency. And that's what we want to focus on, because all of the EOs that we deal with throughout this city always comes back to economic insecurities. And part of that is making sure that we develop. So I support you. I'm glad your beautiful children are here to see this moment, because they can grow up to be what they can see in their own mom. And your husband, his shaved hair is looking good because he goes to my barber. And, and, but he gets my time when I need it to get down to City Council. But just appreciate and thank this whole entire family for allowing her to accept this position, because we already know what it's going to take, and sometimes there's going to be sacrifices from the family. So you all are on this journey as well, and I thank you all for allowing her to accept this position so that she can serve this great city of Chicago. And I thank you, Mr. President, for making this appointment of a person who believes in developing. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. I'll say this, development is important to all of us, and the process by which we get there is important. In my conversations with the Commissioner, I feel strong that communities will get that opportunity to move forward, as also with the mayor's executive order on speeding up the development process. Again, our communities can't wait. We've been in shambles and troubles for a number of years, and I'm glad that we have someone that understands that portion of it, not necessarily the academic portion of it, but the operational portion of it, to lead that department. I say this with all sincerity. It's probably, next to the police superintendent, probably the most important department that we all as collectively have to deal with. We're glad to see someone of your caliber and someone of your care and concern leading that department. Godspeed and God bless. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I do rise to support this resolution ordinance. I have had the pleasure of knowing the Boat Wright family for almost twenty years now, and I can tell you without question that we have a pro-business commissioner. So we're going to change the initials to PBB. That's Pro Business Boat Wright, alright? And so we have a commissioner who understands the importance of working with Alderman, and understands the importance of getting deals done. I'm extremely excited, because you all know that Ms. Boat Wright has been part of the Pullman Renaissance when she first started with CNI, Chicago Neighborhood Initiative. And we have created over $2 billion of public-private investment in the community, and we've created almost 2,000 jobs in the community. So that's just a small fraction of what this city is in store to see coming down the future. So we have someone who understands it, working with us, working with the administration, working with the community. So I'm excited to have Commissioner Boat Wright in this seat, and I know you're going to do a fabulous job. And congratulations to your entire family. You all have been supporting her throughout her entire career, and, you know, we hope nothing but the best for everybody. So thank you so much, and God bless.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Mr. President, I too support this appointment. I had the pleasure of meeting with Sierra yesterday. We had a nice conversation. Certainly, I look forward to good things in my ward and the city. And also, if, I'm glad to see you're from the community, so working with somebody from the community, for the community. And if Anthony Beal gives you two thumbs up, I give you three thumbs up. So look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, I'm going to resist the urge there. Just spare thumbs, just laying around. Alright. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the City Council, and good afternoon to you and your family. Unfortunately, we have had several near misses in meeting, but as my colleague from the 17th Ward said, if you have friends that vouch for you, you're all good in my book. And Alderman Mitchell and Beal both told me to be nice to you today, so I'm going to acquiesce to their request. No small victory indeed. But I do want to just point out a couple things, if I may, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to join you at committee, but I do believe that we do have to become very much pro-business once again in the city of Chicago. Your predecessor, as some of my colleagues could attest to, would languish on for months on what kind of leaves should be in a parking lot, what color fruit should come out of a tree, and all the while miss an opportunity to build in our communities. I'm not going to say who, but Maurice Cox knows who I'm talking about. The fact of the matter is this, we have a lot of programs that are waiting for action and execution. As we look at the recovery plan from 2023, some notable highlights that are of concern to many of us are the vacant lot reduction strategy, which many of us on the South and West Side are familiar with. The 12,000-plus vacant lots, of which we allocated, or committed, excuse me, $42 million to addressing and have only spent $11 million. The vacant rehab project, which we constantly hear about from individuals from our community, looking for opportunities in which our own neighborhood businesses, young men and women can rehab some of the vacancy in our community. We committed over $50 million to that and have spent zero up to this point. There are many other issues that are in that plan, which I know you are familiar with, or if not, I could help you become familiar with. But I think at the end of the day, Department of Planning and Development has had numerous successes when it comes to starting pilots, but never taking them beyond the pilot stage. Most notably, Mr. President, Invest Southwest by your predecessor was designed to focus on areas of investment. Unfortunately, of the ten locations, only one was in a Latino community. We have seen where we were able to look and encapsulate investment dollars in those districts, and we failed on a couple of points. One, beyond the ribbon cutting, there was very little follow-through and build-out, which I am hopeful that you will see through. Two, in communities on the Southwest Side, which didn't fall in a TIF district, in neighborhoods that don't have those extra financing areas, we need to be able to commit to expanding those programs in those neighborhoods as well, so that we can continue to build out those economic opportunities, not just in those ten districts, but across all seventy-seven communities. To make Roslyn what it is, to make, to lift the ninth ward up the way you have, is no small feat. Now I need you to do that times seventy-seven. So I look forward to the opportunity to working with you and the administration to make that happen, because there are some glimmers of hope within your department, but we need to address what we know is already out there. We need to double back on those programs, particularly the home modification, the emergency heat assistance, and all of those things that have languished for three years because of COVID. All of those need to be brought to the forefront immediately, and I hope that in working with you, not just the 15th Ward, but all wards, can see some of these projects come to fruition beyond the initial ribbon cutting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Mr. President, I rise in support, of course, of your candidacy. Commissioner, I'm very excited that someone of your extensive credentials is taking on, taking on this extreme responsibility, and I look forward to rebuilding LaSalle Street into a multi-use booming district, arm-in-arm with you after a global pandemic. So thank you very much for, for joining us here at the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too support this resolution and echo some of the words that have been spoken by my colleagues. Ms. Boat Wright and I had a telephone conversation yesterday, and I just want to comment on the energy and the passion that you exuded through that Zoom meeting. It's very inspiring to hear who you are and where you come from. Mr. Mayor, I will say, although we disagree on a lot of different things, I want to commend you and your administration on giving opportunities to Chicagoans. Through and through, we see it time again, that you are enabling Chicagoans to get to higher levels. We see it with the police superintendent. We see it with corporate counsel. We see it now with the Commissioner of DPD. And it's great to see, and I hope we continue to do that. We have not seen that for a while. So giving people opportunities, whether from the North Side or the South Side, we are all one. So I would like to see us continue to give these opportunities to the sons and daughters of Chicago, and you're doing that, so I commend you. Also, I commend you, Commissioner, and I wish you all the very best. And I'm privy to say, I hope that we can continue to bring more success to the 45th Ward, where we are bringing phenomenal developments to our ward, and our community is excited, and we're excited to partner with you. So, thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to concur with my colleague, who I have a very similar take. To have a Chicagoan in one of the most important positions in city governments is extremely important. You understand the heartbeat of the city. You are the heartbeat of the city. Whether it's in my ward, the historic and beautiful Route 66 along Ogden Avenue, or the Second Magnificent Mile on 26th Street, or whether it's the gateway to Midway on Cicerone Avenue, I think you understand, as I do, the insignificance of these gateways, these historic avenues, and how we need to not only have these spaces survive, but thrive. And I think you understand that. And I know what you've done on the South Side, but I also know you have a view of our city that's much broader than that. So I think you're the exact right person. I'm so excited to work with you, and I'm so excited about this appointment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Mr. President, I undoubtedly stand in support of this appointment as a member of the first, finest, and best sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Incorporated. We're just excited that not only our mayor, but our CEO selected someone capable, competent, and qualified from Chicago, who understands it and who gets it. So not only us in Inglewood, but across the entire city of Chicago, we look forward to cranes in the sky. We look forward to folks working in our communities, in the seven seventy, seven, seven, seventy-seven beautiful neighborhoods that make up our city. Thank you to your family, your beautiful children, and your husband of the great fraternity, Omega Man, for sharing your mom with us. She's got a lot of work to do. We have been stagnated for the last four years. And there are certain projects and developments that the trees and parkways were more important than getting the job done. So congratulations, Commissioner. We look forward to the investment in following the CETA maps, the Social Economic Disadvantaged Communities, and using that rubric system, especially for the South and West Side. God bless you. We are excited about your future.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of this body. Commissioner, congratulations. Look, I trust your intellect, your professionalism, your passion, and your vision for the city of Chicago. I think this appointment is one that we all agree on, that here in the city of Chicago, there is beautiful talent that we have not affirmed and elevated. And here we are, one of the best and brightest in the city of Chicago, ready to take our city to a new level. And so I'm excited for all of the possibilities that you're going to bring to the family, to the Boat Wright family. Thank you for borrowing your partner and your mom, so that we could build what is already the best city and make it better. There's going to be long days and long nights, and she will go down in history for what this city will look like for the future to come. Commissioner, I look forward to our relationship. I look forward to the brilliance that the Department of Housing and the Department of Planning is going to bring in the next three and a half years. Congratulations, and welcome to the city of Chicago.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Clay.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I too rise in support of Commissioner Boat Wright. I am so excited. I would, I did wear my T-shirt and thought of you this morning, because all great things come from Chicago, okay? And this is a testament of that, to have a Black woman leave the Department of Planning and Development in one of the best cities, the best city in the world.
Freaking.
Okay.
That's freaking.
There you go. Freaking. Sorry, I forgot the freaking. It's amazing. And it is a testament to other young Black leaders in this city that they have a place here, that they are respected. Not only do you bring credentials, you bring culture, right? You bring a sense of collaboration that the city needs. And our conversation was more than just development. It was about working moms. It was about the future for the babies in, in the rest of the city of Chicago. So I am super excited, because development not only brings housing, and not only brings commercial corridors, but it brings employment. It brings culture, and it brings community together. And I think that's exactly what all of us here as council leaders want to see in the city of Chicago. I'm so excited to see what you bring to this position, and I can't wait to work with you in the future.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend you on this appointment. I think Commissioner Boat Wright's resume and record of success really speak for themselves, and I look forward to working with her. You know, I have an extensive background in neighborhood development, and we had a great conversation. And she and I are pro-growth, pro-business, pro-development, pro-affordability, pro-equity, and none of those things are in conflict. And so I look forward to working together with her and her team. Thank you to your beautiful family for being here, and drawing those people who don't live in Chicago currently into our great city, so we can continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. I know we got to know each other a bit before, and really appreciated our call. To your family, thank you. Thank you for sharing her with us. And I hope you can tell by the number of people rising to speak with you and the great enthusiasm that we have of the great expectations we have for you and your department. So I know you'll serve the city well, and I hope that we do not age you too quickly with all of the demands that the great city of Chicago is going to have of you, but really look forward to working with you. Thank you. is going to have of you, but really look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, my apologies, Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I started my career in the Department of Planning and Development 27 years ago. And I always look at this appointment as, you know, a signal of how I think the administration is going to go. And I just want to tell you, I am so proud of this appointment that you made. When you talked about finding people who were tethered to the city of Chicago, to do the work for the people of the city of Chicago, Ciara Boatright is a shining example of that. And what I like about Commissioner Boatright to be is that she has a lot of fresh ideas, she leads from the front, and she's asked probing questions, and she's creative. And I think we need that kind of energy and focus on our neighborhoods in the city of Chicago, because we're all different. And I think you appreciate that difference that we all bring to this body. And so when you talk about how you see vacant land in the city of Chicago, or wanting to collaborate more with the Chicago Housing Authority, the CTA, or just being very pro-business, as you have been in Pullman and other places in this city, I very much look forward to you working here. I get emotional about this, because this is the department I care about. And for the last four years or more, this department has not moved. And so I am happy to see you here, and I look forward to working with you, and you have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Derek Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this appointment, and I commend you on this appointment. Ms. Boatright, it's been a pleasure talking and laughing with you. You're not, I'm from the southwest side of Chicago, and Invest Southwest didn't even reach my ward. So we talked about that. I have a lot of ideas, and you shared a lot of ideas. Your mom live right around the corner, so I'm so glad that you're here. So let's get to work and change some things that I've been waiting on for so long. Thank you. I want to thank you and your family. Thank you for lending your mom to us again, and, and your husband. You're going to have to put you on some gym shoes, because you have a lot of area to cover here in Chicago. Again, Mayor, thank you so much. This was a super appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really want to thank and commend you. First, I stand in support of the appointment, and want to thank you really for your vision in this appointment. I think to something Alderwoman Dow mentioned, if you look at like the different commissioners we've had in the past, you've had folks who are very pro-business, very pro-development, without thinking about the equity and how it affects different parts of town, who maybe don't have the creativity and vision to be able to deliver something even greater. We've also seen folks who were very much creative, had a lot of vision, but then weren't able to get development moving quickly enough. And there's a very fine balance that has to be struck to make sure that all those things are happening, and to make sure that when you're thinking of legislation or changes, that it affects each part of town differently. And so I am very excited to see Ms. Boatright here. What's been very clear from the outset is the level of energy and passion that you bring to the role. The fact that you worked in real estate and the executive side of things allows for a better understanding of how to fix and make processes more effective, so you actually get things that are being built. But also with an eye on what it's like being a Chicagoan in different parts of town, and being part of our communities that are sometimes marginalized, and the part that development and planning have into working against that. When we have a city that had been historically redlined and segregated, what you do when it comes to planning and development can work to either reinforce those things or to break them down. And so to have you here is amazing, and we feel really proud of the decision, as well as the work to be done. I also want to shout out the kids in the booth. I think just as somebody who grew up in this city and didn't even have an understanding of how government worked, to have you all here to kind of watch it means so much. And it also grounds us in how important this work is, because the work being done now sets the foundation for future generations and allows those opportunities. So although we have some really tumultuous waters to navigate through, when you think about the city forward and the city vision, I think one, the name fits. And if I'm going to trust somebody to navigate us through it, having Ms. Boatright at the lead, having the Commissioner, puts us in good position. So thank you very much for this appointment, and look forward to seeing it confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Aldermana Happenworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend you on this appointment, and congratulations to you, Commissioner, and your family, beautiful family. This is a very exciting time for all of us. I was born on the south side. We had a really great conversation, and I know that you're going to build a lot of bridges. You're going to connect us. We're going to see transformational changes, especially around our transit system. And I love the way you talk about affordability and economic development. Me, as a small business owner, I love how you speak about our public spaces, including how we could co-locate libraries and affordable housing. That's very exciting, too. I just wanted to thank you for your vision, and also I know that you're going to come in with spirit to work with other departments, because we need it. Right now, when we're talking about building a bike grid across the city, or expanding along the red line, underneath the red line in Edgewater, and throughout the reconstruction of the RPM, I have a lot of faith in you and your family, and, and what we can do together in this fantastic city. I'm very excited for you, and I can't wait to work with you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, I rise to support this appointment of Ms. Boatright. As someone that represents the loop, I understand the importance of making sure that our economic engine remains strong. But, Mr. Mayor, our constituents on the south and west sides deserve better, and have been waiting far too long to have developed communities. Mr. Mayor, thank you for choosing someone, as Chairman Coleman stating, stated, excuse me, is a Chicagoan, who knows our communities, who will think out of the box, who is a relationship builder, someone that draws circles and not lines, and who is excited to transform our communities. Ms. Boatright, thank you for taking on this task, and also thank you for the Boatright family. Blessings.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ronnie Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in strong support of this nomination. You search for the best, and you found it right here in the city of Chicago. I'm very excited, because Ms. Boatright has been described as a perfect combination of being business-minded, but also community-centered. And it's not lost on me that this month, we celebrate the life of Martin Luther King Jr., who talked about a beloved community. And I know under this leadership, you, Mayor, this Commissioner, Chicago will come as close as it has ever been to being a beloved community. So Ms. Boatright, I want you to know that your family's proud of you, and thank you for the sacrifice in being on this journey with your mom and your wife. I want you to know that your community is proud of you, the 21st Ward is proud of you, and I hope that you are proud of you, because you could have been working and doing anything in this world, and you chose to serve and give back. So thank you. Much success, and we got your back.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman William Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to say to you, once again, you've done a great job in putting black women in leadership. To your right, black history; to my right, black history. And once again, you're writing history by putting a great Commissioner in place. And so I extend my respect to you, and I extend my celebration to you, who not only is connected to the 6th Ward, but is truly a negotiator, and truly somebody who knows how to get things done. We see the work down the street in Pullman, and I have a feeling you're going to pull us all together to make this city great. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have one final speaker before the chairman closes. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? All right, our final two speakers. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Burnett.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And, and I just want to also commend you on this appointment. You know, you can't be in a room with Ms. Boatright and not get excited. Her passion, her excitement about the future of the city of Chicago can be felt everywhere she go. When she came in here to speak, she had developers, I've never seen a Commissioner to have developers to come and testify for them. She had people from non-for-profit organizations come to testify on her behalf. She had people from the financial industry to come and testify on her behalf, because they all know that she understands all of that. I think we're blessed to have her as our Commissioner. Matter of fact, she hit the ground running. I actually been working with her already. Matter of fact, she's been in deals late at night, negotiating on large developments in my ward, for which some of those large developments may, some of those large developments would make a lot of neighborhood opportunity funds to go into other areas in the city of Chicago. She's well-rounded. She understands what's going on. I think this is a great appointment. Her family, you all should be very excited about this, very proud of her. And she also understands that right now, the market is going through a time right now. But this is a time when it's getting ready to turn around, so this is a great time for you to be in there, and it's good to have somebody who understands finance and know how to leverage things to make things happen. And as I said, when you came to see me, the only thing that matters in this business is groundbreaking and ribbon cuttings. Groundbreaking and ribbon cuttings. That's what we need, and I look forward to doing a lot of them with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chairman Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very excited about this appointment as well. The Department of Planning and Development is an economic development department, responsible for building, creating jobs, creating tax revenue that the city needs in order to put forward programs. So I'm very excited. I'm also excited about the fact that she's going to complete the Invest Southwest programs, and also take a look at investing in the northwest and southwest sides as well. I also appreciate the fact that during her testimony, during her presentation, she talked about how she was unapologetic about being pro-development, pro-business. That's the narrative that we need to translate out there, that the city of Chicago is open for business, that we want to make sure that projects are getting done in a quick way, because we know that time kills deals. And all you have to do is look at certain parts of the community, parts of the city, where projects have been announced, but never, never broke around. I also appreciate the fact that she actually had to deal with the Department of Planning and Development, when she worked externally, whether with CNI or CLACO, and understands the bureaucracy. So I appreciate that, because she'll be able to fix that firsthand, and she understands the importance of making sure that we're getting projects financed, making sure they're penciling out, and making sure they're actually coming to fruition. As my colleague from the 27th Ward mentioned, typically, we allow for 30 minutes of public testimony in a committee. I can tell you that she used up all 30, all 30 minutes, because we had 10 people come in and talk about how great she was, from both the business sector, not-for-profit sector, and the finance sector. We even had a prior Commissioner talk about how excited they were about this appointment. So I can tell you that we're very excited about this. We're really, really ready to roll up our sleeves and work with you, really ready to talk about any challenges you face legislatively. Please feel free to reach out to us. We can introduce legislation to help make your job a lot easier, and create the necessary jobs and revenue for the city of Chicago. Mr. President, I move for...
Yes, sir. On your motion.
I move for pass of these two items, Items 1 and 2, by the first viable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very good. There's been a motion for a roll call. Madam Clerk? I know, but another Alder asked for a roll call vote. Yeah, I got it. So as our clerk gathers, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time. For clarity, this, for clarity, this vote is for Commissioner as well as the CDC, so the Community Development Commission as well.
I did tell him it was not available yet.
So again, we're bundling both of them together.
One moment, please. No, it's coming.
And I know Ms. Boatright's children are eager to get back to school, so I want y'all to hurry up. Yeah, Madam Clerk, if that is not cooperating, let's just, we have bundled both items, and let's just take an oral vote. Oh, looks like it's almost...
It's working. Just one second.
It's working.
All those are voting who wish. The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. Hit refresh. The voting is now open. All right, I will call on anyone who has not voted yet electronically by a voice vote. Alderwoman Coleman. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderwoman, sorry, Alderman Knutson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Mana Happenworth. Okay, with all those voted, the voting is now closed.
Yeah, thank you very much. There are 49 yeas, zero nays. This motion passes. On the motion to reconsider, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Congratulations, Commissioner Boatright. So because we have not moved on to the next item, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mana Happenworth. She'll speak from the mic of the 5th Ward. Thank you.
Please add me to the vote.
You're a yes vote. Yes, very well.
Yes, I absolutely vote yes.
There are 50 yeas, zero nays. Congratulations one more again. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairman Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 3 to through 10 on the report are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas collectively voted on by committee members introduced by Mayor Johnson during the December 13th City Council Meeting. Appointment of David W. Arfeeta, SSA Number 31, reappointment of David J. Genipole, and appointments of Laura K. Batwinnick, Virginia Mulgary, and Dominica...
And appointments of Laura K. Batwinnick, Virginia Mulgary, and Dominica Hertzberg to SSA number 33. Appointment of Keela Colbert and Shansi Cheeks to SSA number 50. The appointment of Jamarin Whitaker to SSA number 56. I move for passage of these appointments and reappointments by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Items 11 and 12 on the report are scopes of services, budget, and service provider agreements to various special service areas which were collectively voted on by committee members and introduced by Mayor Johnson during December 13th, 2023 City Council meeting. SSA number 2, Belmont Central located in the 30th and 31st wards. SSA number 5, Commercial Avenue, located in the 7th and 10th wards. I move for passage of these ordinances by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. It's not very often you get a chance to take pictures with someone that popular, so I thought I would do that. All right, our next committee, Health and Human Relations, the Chair recognizes Chairperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for the Committee on Health and Human Relations, which met on December 18, 2023 at 1:00 p.m. The Committee considered two resolutions last meeting, the first being R. 2023-0005541 to call on U.S. Congress to clarify U.S. tax code to prevent misuse of Puerto Rican tax incentives and negative economic impact on Puerto Rican people. This item received a due pass recommendation from Committee. Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The second item was Resolution 2023-0006422, which was an expression of support for United Nations Resolution 377, known as "Uniting for Peace." This item received a due pass recommendation from the Committee. Alderman Lasparra and I request that we defer and publish this item.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Very well, thank you very much. Our next committee is our Committee on Housing and Real Estate. The Chair recognizes Chairman Byron Sincio Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held in-person meeting on January 17, 2024. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of 10 ordinances. These include various negotiated land sales, loan, and security agreements, and an intergovernmental agreement. The following items from the Department of Housing are grouped for convenience. Item number 1, Ordnance 02023-0006387, issuance of multifamily loan to Duo Development Corporation for acquisition of three buildings through the preservation of existing affordable rental program in the 31st and 33rd ward. Item number 2, 02023-0006388, issuance of financial assistance and loan restructuring to Brainerd Senior Preservation LP for acquisition and rehabilitation of building and adjacent facilities located at 8901-8925-South Lumister Street in the 21st ward. I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see a report for the Committee unless I'm missing something here.
You should get a copy of the summary reports, it is part of the-
Is it one, okay, my apologies, maybe I'm missing it, thank you.
Okay, we'll just double-check to confirm that, we'll bring you right over. All right, so there's a motion, hearing, seeing no other hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following is the automatic introduction by Alderman Wagispack, is item number 3-0023-004114, designation of 1868 through 1878 North Milwaukee Avenue as low affordability community in the 32nd ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number 4 is from the Department of Fleet and Facility Management, Ordnance 02023-0005776, public way easement agreement with 3305 Laundale Development LLC to maintain and operate drainage swill in portions of city property at 3300 South Ketsi Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 5 is from the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities. This is 02023-0006379, intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Housing Authority regarding accessibility of home modification program. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The following items from the Department of Planning and Development are grouped for convenience. Item number 6, 02023-0006385, sale of city-owned properties located at 4337 South Lake Park Avenue, 3435 West 23rd Street, and 3109 East 92nd Street in the 4th, 22nd, and 10th wards. Item number 7 is 02023-0006402, sale of city-owned properties in the 3rd, 10th, 28th, 29th, and 37th wards for adjacent neighbors under Chi Block Builder Land Sale Program. Item number 8 is 02023-0006394, negotiated sale of city-owned property at 1946 and 1948 West 63rd Street to Rainoso Insulation LLC for redevelopment at open space and parking lot for adjacent commercial space in the 16th ward. Item 9 is 02023-0006396, negotiated sale of city-owned property at 2151 West Adams Street to sustained build LLC 2149 to consolidate with adjacent property for construction of a three-story multifamily building. And item number 10 is SO23-0006309, negotiated sale of city-owned properties with redevelopment agreement to Millhouse Development LLC for 4727, 4735, 4739, 4743, 4755, 4757, and 4759 South Cottage Grove to remediate property and construct three-story building with ground floor food hall and two floors of commercial retail and restaurant space in the 4th ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Thank you, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Our Committee on License and Consumer Protection, the Chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
To the President, members of City Council, I am reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on January 16, 2024, to consider five ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the 17th, 33rd, 47th, and 48th wards. The Committee has recommended passage of each of these items. That would be O2023-0005106, and others ending in 5107, 6063, 6127, 6425. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number 1 of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Ordinance O2023-0005831, an ordinance designating the 8th precinct of the 23rd ward as restricted cannabis zones. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
There were four ordinance designating precincts of the 13th and 23rd wards as restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing and vacation rentals. That's O2023-0003093, and others ending in 5820, 5822, and 6437. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
O2022-0003483, an ordinance amending the municipal code to prohibit booting of major vehicles by private property within the 33rd ward and 49th ward. This passed Committee on September 26, 2023. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
We held a meeting on January 22, 2024, to consider O2023-0004978, a substitute ordinance to amend the municipal code Title IV and 17 regarding small box retailers. I'm aware that the sponsor of this ordinance, Alderman O'Shea, alongside Chairwoman Harris, intend to defer and publish this item.
No objections, so ordered. Thank you.
And lastly, O2023-0004230, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of Chicago regarding ground transportation vehicles. This has been re-referred to the Committee on Finance. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Our next committee, Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, the Chair recognizes Chairperson Lasparra.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Wednesday, January 10, 2024. The Committee held a subject matter hearing on the Chicago cycling strategy with the Department of Transportation. No votes were taken on that topic. There were 372 other routine traffic items before the Committee. One item was held in Committee, two items failed to pass, and 369 items passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, concludes our Committee reports. Agreed upon calendar. On matters on the agreed upon calendar, Alderwoman Harris. I'm sorry, oh, transportation, sorry, I guess I'm zoning. Yeah, it's like somebody's ready to go, huh? All right, for our Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, my apologies, Chair recognizes Vice Chair Lawson.
President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on January 23, 2024. These reports are grouped for convenience, and the following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page 1 contains document number O2023-0006384, the amendment to municipal code Titles 4, 11, and 14, to make technical corrections and adjustments to Chicago's construction codes. I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 1 also contains document number O2023-0006382, the amendment of municipal code Titles 2 and 4 regarding licensing of apprentice plumbers, plumbers, and plumbing contractors. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages 1 through 6 contain various map amendments in the 4th, 11th, 20th, 25th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 34th, 35th, 37th, 40th, and 43rd wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Lastly, page 7 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade, in the 1st, 23rd, 27th, 28th, 46th, and 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objection.
No objections, hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Very well, finally, our last committee, Committee on Transportation and Public Way, the Chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on January 10, 2024. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Page 2 includes one ordinance for grants of privilege introduced by the local Alderman from the 27th Ward. Pages 3 through 5 includes 20 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from wards 1, 4, 23, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 35, 36, 39, 40, 42, 48, and 49. Page 6 includes item, ordinance 2023-0006447, a subdivision ordinance for a property located in the 30th ward. Page 7 includes item, ordinance 2023-0006441, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the 4th ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Now, for the agreed upon calendar, matters on the agreed upon calendar, Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received from the clerk, City Clerk Andrea M. Valencia, a toll of 201 items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia and the following Alderpersons, Alderperson Hall, Harris, Lee, Quinn, Lopez, Coleman, Curtis, O'Shea, Tabarez, Tolliferio, Nugent, Riley, and Alderperson Gardner. And I move passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. All right, now we have new business. Mr. Clerk, we'll call the wards, beginning with the first ward.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lasparra has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section 4-60-023 to disallow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Grand Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License. Alderman Lasparra also has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the 1st Ward Wage Allowance Aldermetic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Dahl has proposed ordinance for permit for assigned signboard at 1414 South Wabash Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Nancey has proposed ordinance regarding arbitration and police discipline, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Mitchell has proposed resolution to call for U.S. federal government to provide additional funding and resources for U.S. Postal Service mail carrier security, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Chico and Alderman Villegas have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section 17-5-0207 by requiring planned development approval for mining excavation permitting, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Zoning and the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Lee has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 11th Ward Wage Allowance Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Ramirez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section 4-60-023 to disallow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of South Archer Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the 13th Ward Wage Allowance Account Aldermetic Expense Account, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Lopez has proposed order for the Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources directed to end all non-medically relevant telework policies across all departments, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Lopez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section 4-64-050 by allowing persons with disabled parking permits to apply for a new permit at new residence with written certification from the controller, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Lopez also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on participation, benefit, and enrollment outreach associated with Smart 911 program, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Lopez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter 2-25 by adding a new section, 2-25-095, regarding prohibition of deceptive excessive consumer fees, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez also has proposed resolution to call for U.S. President Biden and Secretary of Homeland Security to process any request for temporary protective status to Ecuadorian citizens migrating to the United States, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Lopez also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on carbon dioxide capture and storage technology, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Moore has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 17th Ward Wage Allowance Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Rodriguez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3501 West 26th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Rodriguez has proposed ordinance for approval of arbitration option in certain police disciplinary cases as set forth on October 19, 2023 interest arbitration award. Correction. Alderman Sichu Lopez has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2724 West 21st Street, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Sichu Lopez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 17 dash 6 dash 0403 F by requiring special use approval for religious assembly permits, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Fuentez has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 26th Ward Wage Allowance Automatic Expense Accounts for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin has proposed ordinance for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 564 West Taylor Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4 dash 60 dash 022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Lake Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Irvin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4 dash 60 dash 022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Roosevelt Road, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Irvin and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 3 dash 50 dash 020 by excluding paper bags provided by shoe repair or shine businesses for customers' use from paper carryout bag definition, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Tila Fiero has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 29th Ward Wage Allowance Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Cardona has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 31st Ward Wage Allowance Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Wagas Pack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1435 West Webster Avenue, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Sheil Silverstein Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Conway and others have proposed ordinance for prohibition of expenditures, appropriations, or allocation of funds in excess of $1 million received under the American Rescue Plan Act without City Council approval, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees have been called, the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and the Committee on Health. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Vegas, Alderman Sichu Lopez, and Alderman Conway have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 2 dash 92 by modifying Sections 2 dash 92 dash 420 and 2 dash 92 dash 510 to include affirmative action advisory board monitoring of participation in veteran-owned business enterprise used in public contracting, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Alderman Vegas and Alderman Sichu Lopez have proposed resolution to call for hearings on Chicago Housing Authority's plans of actions to address vacancy rates of scattered site properties, which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Vegas has proposed ordinance for correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of September 14, 2023, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Vegas and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings to analyze costs of converting buildings from natural gas to electric for heating and cooking systems in Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Economic Capital Development and the Committee on Environment and Energy. The matters referred to the Committee on Rules. Alderman Vegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Sections 2 dash 32 dash 770 regarding temporary financing for extensions and improvements of Chicago water systems, public and private side lead service line replacement, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderman Vegas and Alderman Haddon have proposed resolution to call for Illinois Governor J.B. Pritzker and the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to reevaluate and increase allocation of bipartisan infrastructure law funds to Chicago for use in replacing lead service lines, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy and the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Vegas also has proposed resolution for expression of support for the people of the Ukraine and call on U.S. Congress to approve funding for continued provision of defense systems, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Vegas also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on state of Illinois data storage security, which is referred to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Vegas and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Title Two by adding new Sections 2 dash 50 dash 045 and 2 dash 112 dash 205 regarding definitions and terms of health and social service contracts within the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Joint Committee of the Committee on Health and Human Relations and the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Mits has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4 dash 60 dash 023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West North Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Spazado has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 38th Ward Wage Allowance Account, the Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Nugent has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4 dash 60 dash 023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses within area bounded by Chicago Northwestern Railroad right away, West Peterson Avenue, and North Rogers Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Nugent and others have proposed resolution to call for Illinois General Assembly to amend Illinois Public Labor Relations Act to require those presiding over grievance-related and peace officer receive adequate specific training, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderman Napolitano has proposed order for an honorary street designation as Helen Baran Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Napolitano also has proposed order for an honorary designation as Officer Richard P. Halogen Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Napolitano also has proposed order for a transfer of funds within the 41st Ward Wage Allowance Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Riley and others have proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Titles Four and Nine by adding... Alderman Riley and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Titles Four and Nine by adding new Sections 9 dash 64 dash 161 regarding location and permitting of valet loading zones, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Riley has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Section 7 dash 38 dash 117 to disallow mobile food vehicle stands at 200 South LaSalle Street, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Lawson has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 44th Ward Wage Allowance Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 47th Ward Wage Allowance Expense Accounts for the year 2024, which is referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Martin has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Title Nine by adding a new Section 9 dash 88 dash 050 regarding establishing a police report online portal and by amending Section 9 dash 100 dash 130 by replacing text in its entirety regarding vehicle owner liability for stolen plates, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderman Martin also has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Section 2 dash 156 by modifying various sections regarding definition of city council contractor, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of automatic introductions.
Alderman Mitchell for the approval of the journals.
Standing committees?
Alderman Mitchell for approval of the journals.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from the December 13, 2023, and December 14, 23 meetings. I move that they be approved.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting, I'm not aware
Alderman Hadded would like to be added to the finance vote. Excuse me, Alderman Ramirez Rosa would like to be added to the finance vote.
But we're talking about money. Why do you ask money?
Hearing no objection. Back to Alderman Mitchell, please, for the date and time. Decorum, please. Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
The next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago should be held on Wednesday, January 31, 2024, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, the ordinance shall take effect to be enforced from this and after passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman 7th Ward.
I heard it. Thank you. Hearing no objections. Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. Hearing no objections, so ordered. All right. Now for omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President.
Just... The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a matter of order, what happened to the notice that was given for the arbitration motion?
Yeah, it's my understanding that Alderman Rodriguez decided not to receive it.
So, Mr. President...
Sorry, to receive it? Proceed, right, in committee? Okay, that's my understanding.
Mr. President, if I may...
Sure, you may.
Thank you, sir. Since this was properly noticed by our colleague from the 22nd Ward, and we are within the open meetings requirements, then I would move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the purposes of adopting the arbitration option.
Okay, thank you. So there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules to take up this matter. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to table that item as the chairman wants to do it in committee. It is tabled.
Just hold on a second. Thank you. Alderman Bill, would you wish to be recognized? Okay, the chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Mr. President, that is an item that is being direct to the City Council, and you should not be able to table that item as such. Thank you.
So there is a motion to table the suspension of the rules, which is in order. All right? So now, there's a motion on the floor to table the motion to suspend the rules. So if you vote yes on the motion to table the rules, you do not want to suspend the rules. If you vote no on the motion to table, you wish to proceed with the motion to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarity, I just would like the body to know that there was a court decision to... That our lawyers here that represent the City of Chicago...
Arme, Alderman Bill.
I just want to speak to the motion, Mr. President.
This is... We're not debating at this moment.
I'm not debating, but I just want to let the body know for clarity purposes that we were directed through a court that we were supposed to vote on this item today, and our lawyers told a judge that this will be voted on today.
So I believe everyone is clear about that?
I don't think everybody was clear that there was a court order that we would vote on this today.
That is not our understanding of that order. So I don't know where you're receiving that from, but again, that there is a motion on the floor to table the motion to suspend the rules. That is in order. And so, just for clarity to the body, a yes vote for this motion to table the motion on the floor to suspend the rules is that you wish not to suspend the rules. If you vote no, you wish to return back to the initial motion, which was the motion to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please hit refresh on your device. Raise your hand if you need support. The voting is now open. e-device. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderwoman Taylor. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Mosley. Not in chambers. Alderwoman Scott. Not in chambers. Alderwoman Mits. Not in chambers. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Spazado is a no. Alderwoman Knudson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Knudson is a yes. All those have voted. The voting is now closed.
There are 27 yeas or 20 nays. The motion to lay the motion on the floor to suspend the rules has passed. Alderman Mitchell for the omnibus.
Mr. President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The meeting is adjourned.